I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join in to the pledge of allegiance as we honor America? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda for tonight is to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Dennis, a second, Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board of Education at this time? If not, then let's go to the student representative. Our student representative for tonight is Jonathan Turburn. John is a junior. He's a full IB student and he's currently exploring options for college. He is in the National Honor Society, is a 40 developmental assets facilitator, and a member of the track team, math team, and master of mind. When he has free time, which I can't imagine is part of his schedule, he does play the drums and enjoys music. John, please come to the table.
So, I'm just here to talk about a couple of stuff that's gone on the last couple of months. So, looking back into February, we had two trips. There was one Quebec and one to Germany. And I was lucky enough to go on the one to Quebec and it was a great time. We got to go dog sledding, do a lot of stuff up there. It was a big turnout, bigger than the one in Paris, which was two years ago, which is really good to see. And there was a lot of kids went to Germany too, and that was for two weeks. And I know four or five kids personally that went and had a great time. They got to see a few of the host family for a week, see Munich and stuff, which was a really awesome for them. And they were sending updates the whole time they were there, so they had a really good time. On in March, it was kind of a busy month. A lot of stuff went down. One of my friends, Henze Orca, was in a speech contest through Rotary. And it was kind of gone through the school, went through Rotary. And they went around with, I think there was 30 kids that entered from around the area, and they all wrote speeches on stuff that was interesting to them. And she wrote hers on social media and its effects. And she actually won second place. So, at the end of the month, she's going to Hershey Park and speaking in front of 500 people about it, which is really cool. Then she gets a scholarship, I think to U of R, for $40,000 total, which is awesome for her. And there was Form Language Week, which was a really cool experience. You know, we got to, we do it every year. And to spread awareness, we had a thing in the announcements and had kids come in and answer questions, trivia about other places. And I was actually lucky enough to host the whole thing, two days, two of the three days that we did it. And that was a really fun time. And it was also Music Home Schools Month. So, there were two concerts, band and chorus, and I think those went well. I didn't go and see them myself, but I heard good things. And there was also a musical that went really well. A lot of kids signed up for it, a lot of kids that had never done musicals before, especially in my grade, and they absolutely loved it. And I think a lot of the kids liked it because it was kind of a newer play, so it was very different. Spring sports officially started, which is great. The weather's not really cooperating too much, which isn't as great. But I'm in track, and so the outdoor kids, you know, the distance runners are already outside, but the spinners get to stay in, which is awesome for me, not awesome for the spinners, but you know, I prefer the distance runners, but you know. There was also Senior Project Day, which went really well. I think all the kids that presented passed, which is awesome. And the IB seniors did their extended essay presentations, and they all did phenomenal, which is really good. The seniors now are in New York City for the next couple of days, and they're having a great time. I think last night, someone went to a Knicks game. They're at Rockefeller Center today. They're posting all over Snapchat and Instagram and all of that. So, everyone else gets to see a lot of that stuff. And moving on to April, we're gonna have blood drives in the beginning of April. I think it's sometime in the next week or two. And there's a talent show at the end of the month. And the Honor Society hosts both those things, and hopefully those go well. But they have them at the past. Any questions or anything, let me know. Thanks for listening.
The hall's been quiet this week without the seniors?
Yeah, well, they left all their cars in the parking lot, so it hasn't been too awful. It's been just completely full. They're not even in the back, they're up in the front. Otherwise, it's been great.
Next year, you could do that, right?
Yeah, I'm excited to. I'm gonna park right in the right front center of the building.
I'm pretty sure by then, we'll have changed the policy.
Yes.
So, talent show was, I went a couple of years ago, and I just missed the date last year. So, hopefully, if we can see what the date is.
I think it's on the 22nd, I believe.
22nd. It'll be a good date.
It is.
A lot of fun.
Yeah, it's always cool. A lot of kids do it, which is surprising that they all can show up and do it. I couldn't do it.
You did a good job here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, for having the report. Enjoy your evening.
Me too.
Next on our agenda is Board Member comments. Do we have any Board Members who wish to make a comment at this time?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend the administration for taking the bull by the horn on the water issue. Appreciate that.
And I would just like to extend the Board's condolences to Carol Rosdahl Fisher. I grew up across the street from Carol and know all the kids well. And her daughter-in-law works over at OP and worked as our Director of Food Services for many years and just was a lively, happy, lovely person. And she has a very special place in my heart. So, our condolences to Carol's family.
Thank you. Any other Board Member comments?
As everybody else also is probably here for Senior Project Day. I was here, it was great. It's just so interesting to watch these kids and really develop on what they've developed over the time of processing all this. So, it was really a good time. I enjoyed immensely.
Any other Board Members?
I'm gonna echo what Dennis just said. That was my second year in a row of being able to make the Senior Project Day. And although both years, the students have shined, one of the things that I really enjoy watching, although I wouldn't necessarily call it an informal setting, I really like watching because you just have an inundation of staff in the building with the students. And I'm always refreshed to see what appears to be a wonderful relationship between the students and the staff. So, it's a, there's a really positive vibe there. And both years, I've seen it, at least it appears to me that way. So, it's always very positive.
Any other Board Members who wish to comment at this point? If not, then let's turn to the superintendent's report.
Great. We're bringing you the Board to a couple of great highlights. Today, we first, part three of the ELA exam. And so, next week, we're looking forward to working in terms of moving forward with the math piece. Kids were really in, moving forward and really doing a great job. So, just looking forward to great outcomes with our students. In terms of some highlights, I want to just let you know that last week, the Board, or the district was congratulated and received a really nice honor. For the fourth or fifth time here, we've been identified as one of the best communities for music education in the state of New York. And so, we received this honor from the NAMN organization, N-A-M-N. And so, just a really nice honor for the work that we're doing around music education. So, we wanna congratulate all of our music department staff. And we've shared our congratulations with them over the last week. So, just wanted to share that with you all tonight as well. In terms of some other highlights, we had some great hits just two days ago. I don't know how many are up at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, but I was asleep. And my wife woke up saying, "Wayne, kids are on the TV, wake up." So, I woke up. And we saw two of our kids, Jordan Cohen and Emily Champagne, who were both on Stars of Tomorrow, I believe it was Channel 13. And they were highlighting students from across the entire region who have done a nice job in theater. And the kids were all putting a production on and working together with staff. So, it was really nice to see the kids on TV first thing in the morning. So, really, really great. Just wanna kind of congratulate those students as well. And then today, we really had a very busy day. Our guest, a visitor, was, as you all know, Commissioner Elia, who really came in and spent time today with our staff and our students. She toured high school, toured OP, and then afterwards, spent some time just sitting and talking with our administrative team about the direction of the state. What a, what a great visit. We really enjoyed having her here. And I just, I really have to comment on how, how nice and lovely she was. But, you know, she, in her comments today to the news, she mentioned that she, she really looked at our data beforehand and really, Wayne's a great place, as we already know. It's a great place that should be recognized and celebrated for the great work we're doing with and for kids. And it was just a really great day today with Commissioner Elia. There's some things that'll be on several news outlets tonight. I've heard there's, it's already been playing, Channel 8, Time Warner, Channel 10, and then some other news articles out there. So, just a great day. It was really fun to highlight the work that our staff and students are doing. Really great. And with that said, I'm gonna shift gears now. I wanna talk a little bit about our recent lead testing that Matt was talking about. So, tonight, we have Greg, who's gonna join us, and then we have some other folks. Greg, if you can invite some of our guests and introduce them, that would be great.
You want me to sit up front?
Sure, you want to? So, with us tonight, we have Marty Aiman, who is the Director of Wayne County Water Authority. We also have Kelly Watson, I believe, correct?
Yep.
And Kelly is, can I grab a chair? Kelly is with the Health and Safety, Wayne Freely Lakes, or Jesse Valley Bosse's, Health and Safety. Bob Foose is also here with us tonight. So, we just wanted to continue to keep the Board informed about the, our progress on the lead issue. Obviously, you've seen it in the news, and we reported to you last time. Since we last met, we were able to conduct two days of testing. Thanks to Marty for helping us with that. He had contacted a couple of agencies and shared that information with Bob, and we were able to get a PACE Analytical Services here last week. And they took quite a few samples, 159 total, throughout the district, all the different buildings. The only place that we couldn't get a sample was the concession stand because of the winterization of that line. But that line was just recently put in. But it's something we'll still take a look at once the, you know, once the winterization piece is over. And we're expecting the results to come back in mid-April. Our plan is up on the website. And as you know, our plan has kind of a two- or three-pronged approach to do the testing. And then if anything comes back with numbers that we're not comfortable with, we'll shut that, that device down. And then we'll go through a remediation process, which could include flushing, it could include adding filters, or something even more elaborate. But, you know, so far, things have gone, you know, pretty well. We're pleased with the, with the speed of things. And we've, we've met a couple of times with Marty, and then Kelly joined us the last time. We thought it'd be good to bring them here tonight so they could share some information with you and you could have a chance to ask questions. Bob's been great, he's kind of taken the lead on everything. So, I'll kind of open the floor to questions that you might have for us.
Is this just the drinking fountains, or are you testing every faucet, every sink?
Mostly just sinks and fountains that, human consumption. In other words, we're not testing the storeroom closets or, you know, showers, sorry, or bathroom sinks.
Okay.
But, but we are testing like the disposals in the kitchen, sprayers, things of that nature, anything that might potentially have, you know, human ingestion, so.
And how many devices were there?
We tested about 159. There's still a few, they actually did leave me some. We had the PACE technician do all the testing. Marty gave us a real good tip on this PACE Analytical. We got a really, really good price. That's probably, I mean, we were looking, and it by far beat every price. And even with them coming in, we're way, way under what we thought we were gonna spend. So, you know, totally transparent, they did all the testing. We do have some containers available for my, for me to test if we missed, if we finally missed anything, or we, we wanna run a second test for any reason. What they do is, you know, what happened is, these are all the chain of custodies for each, every source we tested has a name, building. We tested all the buildings, the maintenance building and the bus garage. And so, we're just waiting on the results.
Now, what about our pipes coming in, Marty? Because, I mean, you do all the testing you want here, but if it's not good coming in...
You know, any testing that we've been required to do over the years is not indicative of any problem from the source, in the system. Keep in mind that what we're required to test for, what we're mandated to test for is residential exposure. So, we do, depending on the district, we have 10 suppliers of water that we buy water from. We have to do testing in each area because it has to be representative of the incoming water for each, each service area. But generally, you know, here, Ontario is actually your provider of water. And I had talked to Rod Peets. Rod has been with us in a couple of meetings, and he was unable to attend, to attend tonight. But I'll speak on his behalf. I don't think there's any great concern over what's coming in as far as the building. And it's, you know, within each building where the problem potentially can occur. And, you know, the definition of what constitutes a problem is still kind of being, being worked out. But I like to, I like to commend the district. I think this is a great management plan. This, you know, when, when this thing started to unfold and it, and it kind of rolled from Flint, Michigan, general concern over lead exposure to a highly exposed population, leaded services, some real high lead levels, some lead, elevated lead levels in the blood. So, there was reason for real concern. And there was a lot of inaction out there, there was a lot of inappropriate actions taken, and a whole lot of that. But it kind of settled down. And then Ithaca schools went ahead and tested. They had two, two well sources, two private sources where they were required to test for lead. Public supply buildings are not, or districts. So, most districts were not testing actively for lead. And so, Ithaca raised the banner, and they tested within their schools, found some elevated levels, and they shut down public supply to, I think, all their schools. Brighton followed, and then, you know, you know how it transpired from there. And so, you know, I started to ponder, what, you know, what the heck is the right reaction to this? You don't wanna underemphasize the fact that there could be some elevated lead levels, not just in the schools, but commercial buildings, old houses where you have leaded solder. If your water sits overnight and it's working and potentially corroding metals, you know, you're gonna pick up some lead. That's a fact. And, you know, the testing we do in the residential homes is not indicative of the problem. Our water that you receive here, and again, the, most of the school districts serve by the Town of Ontario directly, it's Lake Ontario water. We serve Freewill School, that's part of the Water Authority service area in the Town of Walworth. Still basically the same water. Ontario pumps to the Walworth tank and it distributes out. It's 99% of the time, it's the very same water. Might be a little influx of Monroe County Water Authority also coming from the lake. Neither source is a problem. Neither water is corrosive enough to require amendments to reduce corrosivity. And our testing, I brought the water quality report along. But both Ontario and Monroe County Water Authorities report an average, the standard, the action level. And this is not a health-based standard, it's an engineering-based standard. 15 parts per billion, set by EPA, but not necessarily health-driven. And that's where they say that's the realistic level that with corrosion control, you can contain average lead or 90 percentile lead levels within homes. Ontario's average is four and a half or five, Monroe County's five. It's the same water, so they're well under the threshold. Their tests range from non-detects out of 20 surveys, 20 samples taken, non-detect to high being 13 in Ontario and maybe 15 in Monroe County. So, everything's well within the threshold. No reason to, to suggest that we had to go any further, do anything further. So, when this came out with the schools, said, "What's the right response here?" And I think the measured response, the pace that this district is on, I think, is just right. You didn't wanna be the lead horse in this race because, you know, what are you testing for? You know, what level is there a real health concern? And it has yet to be established. Two weeks ago, in the DNC, EPA's still struggling with this question. I mean, let's, let's face it, no lead is good. But the, and I wish Wayne County Public Health was here tonight. They are not seeing levels in the blood in the children they're testing. Prior to two years old and again before age five, nothing to indicate there's a problem. And I think the comment was made, we never come out to this part of Wayne County. Not seeing levels, so. So, I'm glad to see the, the noise has been, you know, kind of at a low simmer here because I'm not sure any stronger reaction is warranted. But I'm not sure that it was right to, it's certainly not right to brush this off. So, testing is underway. You know, I'm glad that it was more affordable than what we had originally been, been led to believe. We felt it was inappropriate for us to do the sampling. If anybody had concerns of the really chain of custody and selectively throwing out samples or whatever, and I thought it was a good idea for the school district to stay out of that too. So, I think it's good to have the third party. You'll have the results. This management plan not only addresses the sampling protocol and procedures, it also has a response protocol if there are some elevated levels found. And it's, it's, it graduates up depending on the level of lead found. So, you know, we'll wait for the samples. I commend the district, very well-written report. I read through it again tonight before I came over, and reads well. Doesn't have a sense of panic to it, it is, but it doesn't underemphasize what, you know, what's out there, so. What questions can I answer?
When will you have the results?
By April 15. By the 15th. There's a set of about 10 to 12 business days. We started, like, the great thing about it was no kids in school last week.
Right.
They were able to come the next day, which is amazing. And we got them all done by last Friday. So, I would assume by the 15th, we should have them all.
Is any of this gonna be adable, Greg? Just out of curiosity.
No.
Okay, well, I, I mean, the service, the Bosse service that we use is, is adable
for the health, safety, and risk management. So, Kelly's department is something that's adable, but, you know, they help us in many different aspects. But he and his supervisor really were instrumental in putting the plan together for us. I mean, he gave us a, like a baseline. Bob had to do very little tweaking to, to make it fit our needs. But, you know, it was really well done and puts us in a good place. We have our plan up on the website, so it's available for any of our residents to, to view it. We checked into the sampling piece, but we were told that, that PACE would not be, would not be able through Bosse's.
You'll have to check with Carl Thurnow. But Carl Thurnow, if you have not spent all of your building condition survey money, you can use that because it is part of the building condition. So, that, he was talking about making, if you've got that money available, you can use that for the sampling.
Right. And I know Senator Schumer, I think, was trying to possibly see if he could help out school districts with, financially with some help. But, you know, that was in the paper a few weeks ago. Wait, I don't, Matt, have you heard anything more on that?
No, we haven't, just to try to work on it. I had heard that that might not be avail, it was Nat, you know, that was federal money, and that might not be available till earliest next year, so. And again, Board, just so you know, in terms of cost, we were, we looked at several different folks. These people were also very, very helpful with us with finding a company that was very reasonable. I mean, we went from $35 per spot down to $6 per spot. I don't think we could do any better than that. And that, you know, so for $1,200, as, as I'm sure you're all in agreement, to make sure our kids are all safe, that, that's, that's a real bargain. And I want these gentlemen to know that we truly appreciate their help and support with that, with helping us to secure those different beds, basically, so. Really great.
Marty, I just have a question. The water towers, 'cause this is like foreign to me. Water comes in from the lake and goes into the towers and then goes out to? Or those are just storage towers?
They're just storage. There's a treatment plant down by the lake.
Right. Cleans the water.
By Nickerbecker Road. Treats the water, filters it. There's chlorine added for residual disinfectant, and then it gets pumped up. This is what we call, well, the low zone would be Ontario Ridge Road heading north. That's at one pressure zone. And then there's another pump station at the base of the tank up here that pumps out into us, to our 710 zone over in the Walworth area. So, there's a series of things that happen. The tanks are really just reservoirs for stored finished water.
When does that water need to be used?
It's used continuously, you know.
At peak times. When I was at Monroe County Water Authority, what used to work is the, the reservoirs would get filled up usually at night on off-peak times. And then during peak demand, you know, they couldn't necessarily go out, bring enough to the pumping station to meet the demand. So, the, the different storage tanks were used to help meet the peak demand. And then on off-peak time, they would restock those.
Those are looked at periodically for...
The tanks?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, you know, our sampling is representative of the water coming from the tanks. And, you know, it used to be a time when, as with all of our homes, and leaded paint was, was in both. It was a great coating, a great protectant, but it's been obviously disallowed now and replaced with new paints. Walworth tank was done a couple of years ago and full redo, full stripping. And I forget on that one, Massivance tank, we had lead-based primer underneath the paint. But, you know, that's long gone, and so, no, no big concern there. That's all been redone, so. Ontario's tank, this one up here, is looking pretty rough. And they're in the middle of deciding what they're gonna do with that. They're either gonna replace that or rehab it completely, so. But the source water, the water in the mains, the water right to the fronts of the buildings, not a problem. I mean, we have not had any testing to show that that's, that's an issue. It's an internal problem. It's kind of unfortunate that this has been soft-shoed over the years. And, you know, now you can bet, there'll be new protocol next year. For that, thereafter, we're all gonna test. There's a bill afoot right now. Some, I think it's an Ithaca legislature, proposed a state bill that would require water suppliers to do the testing in the, in the schools. So, school taxes go up, but the water bill goes up. I don't know when.
Just another unfunded mandate.
So, just to kind of make sure that everyone else, also, I wanna make sure I mention this. So, the Health Department, we did invite them tonight. Unfortunately, they weren't able to come. Something came up here at the last minute. But they did tell us that they've never had a case where they had kids who had lead poisoning through water that they've dealt with. They've not seen that yet, it hasn't occurred at this time. So, just wanna kind of put that out there for the community. And, you know, while we're not required, we are doing the testing. We want people to know that our plan is posted on our website. And once we get the results, again, so, three things we're looking at. When we get the results, if there are any issues, we will shut down those areas right away. We've learned that flushing the system usually brings the lead piece down significantly right away. And then using filters as well is another piece that we will look at. So, if there are issues, we're ready to go to make sure that everybody's safe. Information's on the website. And Board, as always, will continue to keep you posted as to what's happening and what's going on, for sure.
I've met with five school districts within our service areas. Lyons, Gannan, DeMarion, Palmac, and Wayne. And Wayne has been most proactive. This is the first management plan I've seen. I'm not saying that the others have not produced one, I just haven't seen it. But again, one more time, I'll commend the district for, I think the action was right, it was appropriate and well-thought-out, so we'll see where, where we go from here.
Any other questions at all, Board, for these gentlemen? Again, I wanna thank you all. Thank you for taking time.
Thank you, Marty.
Good to see you, Marty.
Okay.
It's good to be in front of Ryan when he's not twice as principal.
I was gonna ask you what year you graduated. I couldn't remember. Something, when I graduated.
Seventy-eight, yeah. And something like that.
Seventy-nine, right. Better half, right? Twenty-one or twenty-two.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Marty.
Her family has, Lori's family has Wayne County mail. She's a talent.
So, Board, we kind of wanna now shift gears and talk a little bit about our budget in terms of the updates that we're at now. So, in our last meeting, we talked about our budget gap, which was down a little bit. It went down to 799,000. And when we shared at the last meeting, we talked about our plan to handle that, which was wait on some more state aid. We looked at some pieces in terms of a retirement incentive. And we had some people who came back and said, "Yes, we're interested in retiring." And then the other piece was to free spending. And so, I'll let Greg talk, but good news is, we definitely were able to fill the gap. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the different things. So, in terms of the retirement incentive, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, so, we had put a retirement incentive out there for our staff. And I think it went out in early March. Bob was very instrumental in being a part of that and spearheading that. And fortunately, we did get some staff members that did notify us that they were interested in the incentive. I think at the last meeting, you accepted retirement from one staff member. And I don't know, Bob, if the other ones are probably on tonight's personnel action for the Board to consider and hopefully approve. So, the cumulative savings from the salaries, and I think... So the cumulative savings from the salaries and I think the other thing we shared with you is the, the staff members that came forward. We will not have to replace those salaries, correct, Bob?
That is correct.
Those positions will not need to be replaced, so through attrition. So the cumulative savings of the salaries, the FICA costs, the TRS costs equal two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. The second part of our plan was, we had heard word from Albany that there was a good chance that GEA would be fully restored. If the Board remembers when the Governor put out his proposal, our GEA gap was at about five-hundred-and-fifty. The government proposal eliminated about almost two-hundred-thousand of that. And the final budget did, as we were, I don't wanna say forewarn, but as we were told, did eliminate the remaining gap piece. So for Wayne, that's an additional three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-sixty. And then by the balance of our gap, the two-thirty-four-nine-twenty-eight, we're very confident we'll be able to fill that by the spending freeze that the superintendents put forward. If you remember on the earlier version of the revenue, of the proposed revenues, we planned on carrying over a million dollars to appropriate towards next year's levy. So we'll increase that to a million, two-thirty-four-nine-twenty-eight. And we're confident with the spending freeze that, that we'll have those funds available. If by chance we have more than that left over, any access over the million, two-thirty-four, we would then reduce our reliance on our reserves, as you heard Dr. Timms talk about. So if we were to fare better than that, and we think we might, we would lower our amount we're gonna use for our reserves next year and try to get the reserves at a stable level.
Before we, you know, end out the year, we'll certainly let you know exactly what we have. And we do believe that we'll have a little bit over that one point two. So whatever it is, our goal is to reduce what we take from the reserves.
So according to the budget calendar tonight, we will be asking the Board to adopt the proposed sixteen-seventeen budget to put before the voters. And this slide gives you the, the numbers. So the proposed budget for sixteen-seventeen, forty-seven-million-one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-thirty. That's a one-million-two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase or two-point-six-four percent. Our proposed levy for next year, twenty-million-seven-seventy-one-three-oh-eight. That is a four-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one-dollar increase or two-point-oh-four percent. The point-one-two is the portion of the tax cap formula that, that allows it to go up by CPI. There's, as I said, there's about an eight-step formula, but that's one of the factors that's in there. And a hundred-thousand-dollar home after star, the estimated tax increase would be twenty-nine dollars and forty cents or a two-point-oh-two-percent increase.
So then in terms of the budget highlights, so what we've been able to do with this budget that we're proposing tonight is really there are no program reductions. As our community talked to us about in their survey, they really wanted to make sure that we were able to hold our program study. So there will be no program reductions. There's a four-percent increase in terms of health insurance. Those are costs that we just can't control. We have to unfortunately pay the health insurance. Our ERS contribution rate is fifteen-point-five percent and TRS contribution eleven-point-seven-two percent. The ERS, by the way, is, is, or excuse me, the TRS is down this year from where it was before. And then salary increases per labor contracts would be met with this budget. And then here, you know, with this budget, we are able to hold the district study, especially at this time, while we're completing our comprehensive study, which will help us in the future in terms of our next direction, basically. In terms of the reserve balance, this time we have ten-million-one-hundred-and-ninety-five-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. And then what we're trying to do is, is we have a little bit that we like, well, we have a bunch that we like to take from the reserves. But again, our goal is with our frees in place, that whatever we don't need, we won't take from, from the reserves. So in terms of the reserves piece, if you'd like to.
Yeah, so the first one, the workers' comp reserve, the, the proposed budget calls to use three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars from that reserve to pay our workers' comp costs. The unemployment costs for the district have gone down, so we've lowered that number. I think last year was sixty-five or eighty-five thousand, down to fifty thousand. And the retirement reserve, this is a reserve that's there to help offset the ERS retirement costs. Right now, the state has, does not have a reserve for TRS. I'm not sure why. But we propose to use one-point-one-million out of that reserve and out of our bus purchase reserve, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred, which totals to two-million-one-sixty-six-six-fifty. So after those proposed usages, at the end of the following school year, the sixteen-seventeen school year, our reserve balances would, would come down to eight-million-twenty-nine-thousand-one-ninety-two with this proposed budget.
In keeping in mind, again, in terms of the reserves, we, we are using the reserves. Really, our community and our survey, we heard them say, if you have to do things with programs to hold a study, at this time, we'd like you to use reserves. So we did pull a little from the reserves. And again, should we not, should we have more left over? Our goal is to not use as much from the reserves. So that's our budget that we are asking you to agree to tonight. Are there any questions or thoughts that you'd like to share tonight?
Yeah, just going forward, we need to make sure we are using our reserve factor.
That's our goal. That's our goal. And I think the work, the great work we're doing with Rick Timms and his piece, and he's gonna help us with the fiscal plan, will certainly help us with regard to that. We agree.
And then, could you just clarify in case there's people watching who aren't familiar with ERS and TRS are?
Sure. ERS, the Employee Retirement System.
Employee Retirement System for any of our classified staff, our members of the Employee Retirement System. CSCA.
Secretaries, medical staff, food service. TRS is the Teacher Retirement System.
For certified staff, so teaching staff and administrative staff.
Questions? Okay, we're good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Just an update as well, Board, on another topic now, shifting to our district study. Just wanna let you know a couple of things. Well, prior to the study, let me tell you, our strategic plan, as you know, is complete. The team did work together to complete it. At our next board meeting, we'd like to come back and do a rollout. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the thirty-four folks who worked together to put that plan together. And we're gonna talk about how we might wanna best roll that out. And so again, we'd like to, at the next meeting, come to the Board, share the plan. And our goal is to, if the Board is okay with it, to adopt the plan and to implement it. Great plan, a lot of focus on kids, on instruction, and really how we continue to make Wayne, or continue to make Wayne a great place to teach and to learn at, here in our community. So we'll be back with more information around the strategic plan in our next meeting. And then I wanna talk a little bit about our next steps. So SEAs, excuse me, SES, Dr. Saversky's group, has now completed the pupil capacity study. That piece, at our last meeting, you saw a draft of that in our workshop with the community. And he has now completed it as promised. What we learned is, is we do have some excess capacity between eighteen and thirty percent in terms of our buildings. And then what we've learned is that, you know, with that space, we need to think about what are our next steps with that, basically. So the capacity study is done. You each have a copy of it. That piece will also, as promised, be posted on, it's already posted, I think, on our website. It was there earlier today, so that the community could see it as well. He is now working on the enrollment piece. And that one should be available mid-April, just in a couple of weeks, at the, at the latest, the end of April. And then the last piece that he has, he's working on, is the program delivery piece. So the enrollment data piece, he will share with us and I will give that out to you. And then he'll be back to do a presentation around the program delivery piece to the Board. He will do that presentation to the community stakeholders in the board meeting. And he'd also do one with our teaching staff and our entire staff, so that they can hear the information as well. The program delivery piece, he believes that he should have that all done just before the middle of June, basically. And then as promised, after he gives that report, he would like to then do a stakeholder group. Where we bring together at least thirty semi-stakeholders from the community who will be, you know, they should apply to attend and be a part of it. And bring them all together and spend a Saturday really working with them around the options that are there. Bring back the final report, given their input to the Board, basically.
On the excess capacity of eighteen to thirty percent, how does that compare with other districts? Do you know, or do they have any numbers on that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can certainly check.
Yeah, I would be curious just to see what that would be.
So different districts? I'm not sure. You have some with no excess space?
Right.
You have some with some. So we can check.
But I mean, with the trends of downsizing families, I imagine that's gonna be.
Sure. I can have him look into that and answer that question for you. It's a good question, if we can ask. Okay, so just a couple of things. So just in terms of the timeline, Rick Timms will be back. I spoke to him yesterday. He believes all of his, his pieces, so again, we have multiple balls in the air with this study. Rick Timms believes he'll be done and ready to report to you all back in May, early May, with his piece. Dr. Saversky's piece, the enrollment study will be done in April. The project delivery study between May and June. And then the stakeholders group, he thinks that he needs a little time, so between June and July. So the final piece from Saversky should be back no later than the end of July. TAS group is getting ready to start. That's the transportation portion of the, the study. Mid-April, end of April to June. And I will bring to you, Board, the folks who will be running that piece, so that way you can meet them as well and ask any questions before they get going. And then the last piece that's on our, our study is the architecture piece. And I wanna just kinda talk about that, because we wanna make sure that that piece is in the study. And we'd like to do some workaround with an architect between May and July. And we'll just take a moment and go up and grab my book here. Board, we've done some research and looked out there for some architects to help us. We, we, by we, I'm talking about Dr. Timms and I and Dr. Saversky. We talked about several architects that might be able to help us. The one that I know of, that we all know of, that we think would be best, I'd like to recommend tonight, his name is Jim King. And his firm is King &amp; King Architecture Firm out in the Syracuse area. Jim brings more than thirty years of professional experience to the firm, King &amp; King. He specialized in K-through-twelve educational markets for most of his career. And he has a strong working relationship with New York State Education Department, well-versed in interpreting its regulations as well. King &amp; King is well-known throughout the state for really a number of things. One, efficiency studies. They can come into districts and help you look at a number of efficiencies that you might wanna really pay close attention to. Can you go to this? So they can help the districts to, to look at ways that they might be, you know, effective and efficient around future capital projects as well. So some of the things they'll do are like net-zero projects. So with the lighting in some of our rooms, so if you look over there, you see these light switch, switches. And now in many schools, the way that you can become more efficient is you get the light switches that are sensors, right? You walk in the room, they're on for a while, then they go down. It saves you significant amounts of monies. You can look at your boiler systems, you can look at your, your air systems, you know, all kinds of systems that you have. And, and what they are is professionals in helping you find ways to save long-term expenses in terms of your costs for, for things like that. And then if there are future capital pieces that you need based on your condition survey, they can also help you to find ways to get additional aid, ways to do the project so that you can really save money for the taxpayers. So the company has a lot of experience in doing that. The cost for their portion of doing this kind of a study for a district generally is approximately around twenty-thousand dollars. However, you need to know that that cost can be aided. I know Dennis, you asked a question about can it be aided? It can be aided. And it can be aided in one or two ways. They can do it through a BOSI's co-serv. So he can get aided through the work he's doing through Rick Timms and get aided in that way. And it would come down to around four thousand bucks. Or if, if you end up having to do, if you say, listen, after getting the study done, we'd like to do a project to, to save and make things a little more efficient, then his funds for this, that cost can be funded at, at a higher rate by doing a capital project. So you could get it again through BOSI's, or you can get it funded through a capital project and get even more money back on the study. But at, at the most, it would cost you around four thousand bucks total, basically, for all five buildings. So if the Board is good, certainly what I'd like to do is bring him at least to meet with you at our next board meeting. And the catalog that he has in front of you, or the specs that he has in front of you, I just wanna just take you through a couple of the sites that he has worked at. If you just kinda go to the North Syracuse Central School District Elementary School, you can see some of the work that he has actually had his hand in. This building that you see here, Smith Road Elementary, is one of the most modern buildings that are there. And well-known for efficiencies that are happening across, in that district. The next one is Seneca Falls, which is a district in our BOSI's. He's done a lot of work in Seneca Falls. Mr. McEvney, the superintendent, speaks very highly of King &amp; King in that area. At Central Valley School District, which is a recently merged school district. You can see some of the work that he's done on the building there for Dr. Hughes at Central Valley. In East Syracuse, Manoa, which is well-known for technology and for really green kind of energies. You can see some of the facilities that they've designed and created and built. This one that you see here is the most latest that they're just completing the project on right now. Fantastic district. Dr. Desido, I believe is the name, who's really in her last couple of years of superintendency, is very pleased with the work that's happening out in East Manoa. I, I know of this work because the former principal that I had in my district, she works in this district now and her building is absolutely phenomenal. And, but also very cost-efficient, basically. You'll also see Camden Central. This is a wonderful school and boy, I'd love to take some of you to see the cafeteria that they have. It's out of this world. This, this is just phenomenal. This building that you see here became ninety-percent reimbursable to their district. And it is just, their, their aid that they got out of it because of things that King &amp; King did for them, ninety-percent reimbursable. Couldn't beat that at all. So this is the quality of work that, that is there. And I have to say, I personally know of the quality of work. My last district, Stockbridge Valley, I worked with King &amp; King. We had a, a project that in my last year there, we got approved by the taxpayers. It involved roofing job, twenty-million-dollar roofing job, landscapes, excuse me, placades. We put in some renovations to offices. All that project was approved just before I left. And I have to tell you, the work that came out was fantastic. So I know all these folks, they're in our region, they're in our BOSI's, and they're well-known throughout the state. So Board, I would like to at least bring them so you can see them. And if you are confident with them, then we kinda would go from there. So if you're in agreement, I'd like to at least bring them and you can kind of ask any question that you like. But I think they would be great. And they work, by the way, very closely with Dr. Timms and Dr. Saversky on these kinds of studies. So they, they already know how to connect and get the work that we need to, to get done in this study.
I have a question for Greg. On our last project, what was our change order percentage?
I'm the one who signed it, and it was way too high.
Was it higher than less than one percent?
Was it higher than less than one percent?
The dollar amount was not unusual for a project our size, but the number of change orders was high.
Okay, 'cause I don't know if anybody else saw this, but that's quite an eye-catching page.
And towards the back, by the way, or I had a page here. I was hoping she was gonna ask me, but okay, that's all right. Here we go. So if you look on this page, by the way, these are all the districts that they're currently working with. You can really.
Currently, not have in the past.
Currently and have. So, you know, some districts they're doing condition surveys with, some they're doing building projects with, some they're doing efficiency projects with. And these are their current clients that they're working with now. Most are from central New York and down to this area. And you'll see Palmac on here as well, in addition to Seneca Falls. So districts close by.
Way out by Buffalo, too.
Yes. So if you ever wanna see some of the quality of their work, you could just, Palmac is very close. You can see some of the things that they're doing.
Is it the intent of the Board to invite these people to a presentation?
I'm good with it.
Is that different, Greg?
Okay. So with that said, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Board.
Are you here for participation in government purposes? Would you like to go home so you can do some homework? Bring your paper up, one of the Board members will sign it for you. Are you taking Mathis here?
Yes, I am.
Although I'd get to stay for another hour. We're leaving in thirty minutes.
Good for you.
Good for you. Have a good issue. Thank you. Under Board business, our first action tonight is to, the second reading and approval of policies, fifty-six forty, which is smoking and tobacco use, fifty-five seventy-four Medicare compliance program, sixty-one seventy, safety of students with fingerprint clearance, new hires, and then fifty-six fifty, which is energy conservation in the schools. Can I get a motion to approve these policies? Dennis, a second?
Phil, any discussion?
All in favor? Thank you. Next is first reading of, of eighty-two eleven Prevention Instruction and new fifty-five thirty-five Payment and Sales Tax. Can I get a motion to approve these? Carrie, a second? Dennis, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And last and certainly not least is to adopt two thousand sixteen, thirteen school budget. Can I get a motion to that effect? Pam, and a second, Rick Timms, any discussion on the proposed budget? If not all in favor? Thank you. Consent agenda, we have a consent of agenda of minute meetings, personnel action. I want to introduce the...
Sure, yes. So for tonight, uh, we have, we had a replacement that we are, we are recommending tonight to you for Jen Agnini, who was a English teacher at a middle school. Uh, this year, we've had a challenge, we're trying to find someone to cover that position, and we have found a person, uh, who is really a sharp teacher, who has been here and doing a really great job. Her name is Ms. Laurie, I want to say the last name correctly?
Sosia, right?
Sosia, yeah. And so we'd like to introduce her to you tonight, or if you just want to stand up and say hi?
Hello.
Hello, Laurie. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we'd like to recommend her tonight as the person of action.
The remaining part of the consent agendas is treasuries report, there are gifts to the district, BOSI's cooperative fit for calculators, the audit committee meetings from March the tenth, budget transfer, and then the appointment of school election personnel. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
My, uh...
In favor? Thank you. Committee reports, communications, Jeremy?
Uh, we will be holding our meeting for the, um, first, five thirty, I believe it's May fifth. The first, before the first board meeting in May, and that's all we have, because we haven't...
Audit committee, Matt?
Yeah, we'll be meeting, uh, Thursday the fourteenth, five thirty, right here in this room. And not much going on now, we're wrapping up the year. Uh, we're going to discuss, uh, policy that, uh, we probably are going to act on, and has to do with Perdiem expenses, and then, uh, we're going to turn up, we're going to report, and then we're going to review our, uh, open executive action plans and status on those things. And that's it.
Phil, policy committee?
We had our last meeting of the year today. We actually had discussed the Perdiem, the, at least the Perdiem issue in the policy that Matt just, uh, referenced. So that's, um, the ball has been thrown back at the audit committee, but we're, we're all, we're all, we're all good with it, so... The only other thing that I would mention, since it was our last meeting of the year, is, uh, Mathis had some good ideas on future policy meetings on, um, how we could do some things differently, it may be a little bit more efficient. So, uh, if I'm on the committee next year, I'll be happy to, um, help get those in place, and if I'm not, I'll be happy to work with those who are to, um, kind of take a look at how we were doing it, and maybe a little bit better way to do it. Thanks to, uh, the doctor for his input on that. That was it.
Thank you. Under Board President comments, I have a few comments. I had the privilege of being, uh, one of the people listening to the senior projects. I had the opportunity to listen to the IB students present their extended essay, and it was, uh, quite an impressive list of extended essays that I listened to that day, and so my congratulations to those students. Uh, the second thing is, we've been trying to arrange a date with Marla, uh, to look at our, uh, to, to watch our videotapes of our meetings and also of our, some of our, uh, workshops, and try to get a date on which, uh, she could give us some feedback. She's available May the fifth, which would require us to have, uh, a workshop perhaps an hour before our board, scheduled board meeting, if that's agreeable to you folks.
Well, so at six?
We, we meet at six instead of seven, and she would give us some feedback, and then we go to our regular work.
Is there any, I, I would suggest, respectively, Mr. President, that maybe we look at five thirty to six thirty? Because we are always wordy.
I'm sure we could get Marla to come at five thirty.
Because we'll say five thirty to six thirty, and it will be five thirty to six fifty-nine.
Can we change the communication time to five, then? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
And have Marla come at five thirty? That works for me.
And can we change that on the website?
Yes.
The other thing, uh, that I, I have, uh, it's about that time of the year when Business First does its, uh, their annual evaluations of school districts. And we're very proud of the rank we've achieved. Well, the, the last year we were ranked, we were ranked sixty-sixth in the state, and that was based upon the, uh, two thousand and fourteen results. And pretty soon they'll, they'll be ranking us on the, uh, two thousand and fifteen results. So I went back and I looked, and Business First also gives you ten comparable districts. They look at twenty-three different economic and demographic factors, and then they say, here are ten districts that are like Wayne Central. And so I went and looked at those ten districts to see how we ranked compared to them. I thought you might be interested in this, because I, I, you know, I sort of like this kind of stuff.
You do.
I do. My wife would tell you it's more than kind of. But anyhow. Excuse me, two of the districts that were in the Rochester area that compared to us, uh, were Hilton and Lebonia. Hilton ranked sixty-seven, just one ranked below us. Lebonia was a hundred and fourth. Iroquois and Star Point in the Buffalo area were similar districts. Iroquois ranked twenty-first and thirty-second, so they did better than we did. Oweebo Appalachian, which is, uh, where the mafia was first discovered, uh, they ranked seventy-sixth. Main Edwell was forty-sixth, that's down in the, uh, southern tier. Shawamont and Scotia, Scotia Glenville, which are in the Auburn area, they ranked a hundred and twentieth and a hundred and forty-second. And Ravina, Cloyman, Selkirk. Uh, they ranked two hundred and fourth, and Kinderhook ranked a hundred and fiftieth. So I think our rank of sixty-six looks pretty darn good. And then the last thing, I do have a statement. I understand that because we are looking at transportation, we're looking at program, we're looking at staffing, we're looking at building capacities, that, that's causing some nervousness in the district. Uh, and that, since our last Board of Education workshop, that there's been a room, number of rumors and conjecture and speculation about the intention and plans of the board, and concern on the part of the community and staff. As a Board of Education, we are committed to providing the best possible education to our Wayne students while balancing our fiduciary responsibilities to our community and taxpayers. We are faced with declining enrollments and the potential for a closure of the Canadian nuclear power plant, which pay, pays a significant portion of our school budget. And our community forums have indicated that the community does not want to see a decrease in our programs and services. We are using expert consultants in the area of school finance, transportation, and enrollment, building capacities and program, to study our operations and collect data. We have no preconceived notions or plans for those studies. We do have the obligation to our community to make sure that the revenues we receive from our taxpayers and the state are used to their best advantage, and that is the purpose behind these studies. The process will be open, and any data provided to the Board of Education will be readily available to our community. At the same time, we have a team of thirty-four administrators, board members, staff, and community, working on the strategic plan so that as we develop a vision as well as, uh, per, uh, priorities for the education of our Wayne students. It's an ambitious undertaking, but demonstrates our intent to continue to provide the best education possible to Wayne students within our revenue streams. That's all I have for tonight. Uh, before I ask for...
I forgot something.
Okay.
Uh, we also have a workshop this Saturday morning.
Oh, that's right.
What time is that? Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty. Before I ask for a motion for adjournment, we do need to go into executive session to discuss a future contract. It'll be a very short session. Can I get a motion to go into executive? Jeremy? Dennis? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for coming, folks.